Great, that's true.
Any details on collapse over here?
They were just, evidently they had just gotten all the tied them together. So school.
Sound to me, you ready? Sound to me, you ready? Ready? We'll call a meeting to order with roll call. Aye.
President.
Schulte.
Here.
Garagno.
Here.
Keaney.
Here.
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 Here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council will receive information on non-agenda topics brought before the council by members of the public. The council will not discuss these topics and will not take action on any of them at this meeting. Is there anyone who's on the agenda who should be heard? We'll go to consent agenda. One motion approves all consent items. Item one is approve the minutes for the meeting held on September 11th, 2023. And number two, approve and deny appointment of Derek Corkin to the plant commission. Taking a motion of ones and orders. Motion by Garagno.
Second.
Seconded by Schulte. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. General business number one is approve and deny memorandum of understanding with D2 Property Construction and I see for construction of an approximate 5,700 square foot commercial building in the Reesburg Business Park, specifically in parcel 276-2243-11000, generally located in the southeast corner of Greenway Court and Zinga Drive. Tim.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Again, this is with D2 Property Construction. He is a flooring contractor. It's for a 5,724-foot commercial building, single tenant. The incentive that he is requesting is the parcel for a dollar. It is a 1.98 acre parcel, 1.2 acres. It's actually buildable, the incentive is what. We had filled that in last year. It's relatively small parcel, so it's these are kind of difficult to get rid of, so this building fits on there perfectly. It's at the southeast corner of Greenway and Zinga. The approximate construction cost of that building is over $25,000, which means it should assess somewhere in that $340,000-$350,000 range, which would bring $7,500 of increment approximately based on our current low rate into 10-9 annually. So I guess if there's any questions.
Any questions for Tim?
Breaking ground in October if this passes.
Definitely nice to see those posts, as I call them, bullshit stamps, lots fill into the Astro Park Business Park area.
There's still a lot available east of that on the other side of the wetland?
Yeah, that's
That's a bigger one, right?
Yeah, it's like five plus acres over there. That's kind of like the crown jewel.
Yep.
Lot, so it's got the ponds and stuff like that and then the walking trail along the side of it to the west.
Will this be in front of the plant commission next month then?
I assume so, yeah. Yeah, the diagrams that I've given you are not vetted by plan at all, so they'll be changed based on their specifications. That's just for illustration purposes only.
Any further questions?
To approve.
Motion by Garagno to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Zakini?
Yep.
Seconded by Keaney. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Number two through six, I'm going to read through them here and we're gonna try to read through them first and then
Yeah, I want you to do that and probably use this.
Yep, and then Carol Worth is gonna speak about the whole package as one. Then we'll go through each individual one to you all the time. So I'm gonna read number two through six now. Number two is approve and deny initial resolution 4523-23, authorizing $3,650,000 of general obligation bonds for community development projects and tax incremental districts. Number three, approve and deny initial resolution 4524-23, authorizing $2 million general obligation bonds for regional projects. Number four, approve and deny resolution 4525-23, directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issue. Number five, approve and deny resolution 4526-23, providing for the sale of not to exceed $5,650,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds. And number six, approve and deny resolution 4527-23, providing for the sale of approximately $2,260,000 taxable general obligation promissory notes. Carol? How's Carol worth doing today?
I'm doing good, very good. Where would you like me?
Read through fine.
Here.
At the 40 is perfect.
Perfect, all right. Okay. All right, good evening. I am Carol Worth. I'm with Affirm Wisconsin Public Finance Professionals. We are the municipal advisors to the city of Reesburg and we assist the city whenever the city is going to do borrowing for various projects. So tonight, the agenda items relate to the process of borrowing. I did give you a report. I don't know if you want me to reference that report or as we go through this.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
There's a little
Yeah, that kind of get that.
Yep.
Definitely, I'll show you up on the screen for you.
Okay, perfect, all right. Now, I did prepare this report and send it to the city and since that time, we've had some updated numbers. And as I go through, I will share with you what those updated numbers are as well and what it means in terms of the documents that we're considering tonight. So first one I'm going to deal with is the first resolution, which is item number two. The initial resolution authorizing $3,650,000 for 10-11 projects. Now, the key word here is authorizing. The new number that we are working with is going to be approximately $2,720,000 because this is reflective of actual bids that you will be considering on your agenda tonight. So it has changed the numbers around a little bit. But again, since this is a process that is required by state law for the issuance of bonds, bonds means that the city is going to repay this borrowing over more than 10 years. When you go more than 10 years, the process starts with the council getting authority to borrow and that's the key word, authority. So an initial resolution does not bind the city to borrow and it's a not to exceed number. So if you adopt the initial resolution and we issue something less, that's fine. The key is that we cannot exceed that number and that authority is good for a period of five years. So if you don't use the remaining authority in five years, it simply expires. Okay? So the attorney's draft language, which is referred to as purpose language, so that the resolution contains two things, a not to exceed dollar amount and it contains the purpose for which the money can be spent. So this is going to be spent for 10-11 projects and those projects do include the infrastructure. And so again, the key is authority and a not to exceed number. So the statutory language is is going to direct how those funds can be spent. So we do borrow the money, we will keep it segregated, okay? So that it can only be spent for those purposes. So the repayment of that $3,650,000 is going to be over 20 years. It is going to be debt issued in the form of tax exempt bonds, which means the investors who buy the bonds do not have to pay federal taxes on the interest, okay? So that's why they're tax exempt. It's the lowest form of borrowing that the city can do. And we don't know, obviously, what the final interest rates are going to be until the, excuse me, the city actually enters the bond market, okay? So everything that's going to be in my report are going to be estimated rates and they will also include all of the estimated expenses of issuance, which are all going to be part of the interest rate because the way we sell the bonds is that we require the winning bidder to pay all expenses associated with the borrowing, so therefore the net interest rate will include all expenses, okay? So with the second page, you will see the structure of this portion. We were actually working with a number of $3,640 at the time. The number is going to fluctuate, but again, as I said, the project costs are around the $3 million, I'm sorry, $2,720. We are going to borrow for interest for the first two years. It's called capitalized interest, okay? And we do that because there is no increment available until the project is constructed and then a year later, the increment becomes available to start repaying. So capitalized interest is treated as a project cost. So therefore, we start paying principal back in the year 2026 and you'll see they're very small dollar amounts for '26 through '33 and then they increase for the remainder of the term. The reason for that is because later on in this report, we're gonna be talking about another borrowing that is also for 10-11, but the purposes are primarily developer incentives and developer incentives do not qualify for tax exempt financing. So we have to do a separate financing, which is called a taxable. Taxable is more expensive than higher interest rates and tax exempts, so we want to get rid of that debt first. So we're gonna structure in those first 10 years, we're gonna structure the taxable portion, pay that off first and the tax exempt is gonna be structured around it. So that's the reason it looks the way it does, okay? So again, interest rates are fluctuating all over the place. I mean, every day you read the paper and you say, you know, yields are up 10 basis points and everybody is a little nervous right now because even though the Federal Reserve action resulted in no change to interest rates, everybody's concerned that the comments that the Federal Reserve made is that the higher interest rates are going to stay longer, okay? So everybody's a little jittery about that and markets jittery about the potential for government shutdowns. So you're gonna see that fluctuation and volatility until, you know, we enter the market. We still have another Federal Reserve meeting to go through in, right on November 1st, before we're gonna be in the marketplace. So a lot will happen. Okay, the next purpose, right below that, I call that purpose number two and that's gonna be dealing with item three on your agenda, which is the initial resolution authorizing $2 million for ambulance commission purposes. And that number has also been updated with actual numbers, so that is now looking like $1,865,000, okay? So again, the initial resolution is going to be for a not to exceed number and the purpose language, according to the bond attorney, is going to read that it's considered a regional project as part of this ambulance commission. We are going to repay this principal and interest over 15 years. So again, it's a general obligation bond requiring this process of the initial resolution. So $1,865,000 is going to be considered city purposes. It's not gonna be intended to be repaid with increment like we just talked about, so it's going to be considered to be paid back through tax levy, okay? So the next page shows you the amortization schedule and that again is based on $2 million, but you can see there that this one starts with payment right away in '24 and then there's some smaller payments in between and then larger payments. So what we're doing here is we are doing two things. We are wrapping it around the city's existing debt service that is supported by tax levy, which is in the column like over to the right-hand side, not all the way in the last column, but second from the last is the existing debt service that is currently on the tax levy. The combined column would include this issue and you can see there's an increase from '23 to '24, but there will be some what's called premium from investors, which is very common when tax exempt bonds are sold in the market. Investors actually pay you more than what you're selling. When that happens, that premium can only be used for debt service, okay? To lower the levy. So we are expecting that as a very real possibility that will aid in reduction of that debt difference. Then we put these two purposes together that we just talked about and we put them together and they are marketed as one combined bond issue. So again, just for the exercise of the numbers you've just seen, that combined issue would have been $5,640, okay? Right now, with the numbers, the updated numbers, it would be about $4,585, okay? But you can see there, the principal amounts are starting at 100 and they're nice and intentionally done that way to make sure you have at least $100,000 every year and then it increases, which of course is all blending together to give you a nice, what's called lock sizes for marketing purposes and makes it a very attractive offer right that way, okay? So that's what it would look like in terms of marketing, one issue, two purposes. Okay, the next page is a pricing schedule. I will spend more time with you when I come back after we've been in the marketplace. The yield column on this page, it reflects market, okay? Everything else addresses how the bonds are sold in the market. So when I say rates are going higher or lower, it's that yield column that's moving around, okay? So that's what the investor's actually receiving. When I talk about premium, I'm talking about the price column. The price column, you can see anything over 100, which is pretty much everything, means that they're paying more than $100 for $100 worth of bonds and that's how it generates significant dollars of premium. The premium is kept for two things. A premium is either retained by the winning bidder to pay expenses and once that happens, any additional premium comes back to the city and can only be used to apply to debt service, to reduce your levity. So in this case, all of that activity ends up with what's called a true interest cost. Right now, about a 4.33% and again, that's gonna change up and down based on actual expenses as well in the market at the time we're in the marketplace. Right below that is really item number four on your agenda, which is a resolution that says it's providing for the sale of not to exceed that $5,650. Again, just a not to exceed number with the updated numbers. You know, of course, wouldn't be that high, but this is a resolution not required by Wisconsin statutes. It's kind of referred to as a heads-up resolution. It means that the council's actually saying, yeah, we know, we know we're gonna do a bond sale in the future, okay? We are going to direct our firm to prepare the city to go into the marketplace with what's called an official statement, which is really a prospectus on the city and an official notice of sale, which is the bidding requirements that go into the marketplace for the investors and the underwriters to place their bids, okay? So we place them on a date and time specific. We put it on several different bidding platforms, bidding calendars and we pester the underwriters to submit a bid as well. So that's all the activity that is basically referred to. It's not a very long resolution, but that's why I'm telling you that, you know, the whole purpose is to kind of give the council a heads-up that this is going to happen, okay? Okay, the next page. At the same time, we are going to be, I mentioned, issuing taxable general obligation promissory notes. We just looked at tax exempt promissory notes and, I'm sorry, tax exempt bonds, right? And for two purposes, right? Well, this is gonna be tax exempt notes for two purposes. Same thing, where we're gonna do one purpose for 10-11 and then we're going to do the second purpose for 10-8. So the reason these are notes, as I mentioned, we want to get the more expensive, higher interest rate debt paid off first. So we're doing them as notes. Notes do not require an initial resolution process. The council has authority under the statutes to issue notes, so there's no need for that. We're going to, the two purposes is going to be a developer incentive plus we're gonna do the capitalized interest and expenses for 10-11 and that number was $1,525. Updated numbers came in a little bit higher at $1,575. So that number will change, but in this case, as I mentioned, there is no initial resolution, so it's not going to matter. The repayment is gonna be within 10 years. That's a requirement for notes. It has to be repaid in 10 years or less. So the bottom part of page number five shows you the repayment structure. Again, capitalized interest for the first two years, principal starting in '26 through '33. As you can see, under coupon, which means interest rates much higher than the tax exempt interest rates. And the total debt service here is what was included at the beginning of the report in the other 10-11 that we wrapped it around. So that's the reason why we had those small amounts in those first 10 years. We're wrapping around this structure, okay? Okay, the next page is the second purpose, which is the developer incentive for 10-8. And the amount is $735,000, which will cover the incentive and expenses. The principal, this is gonna be structured according to what's right for 10-8, right? You don't need to do capitalized interest. So we're going to start the payment when we it'll be, in fact, the increment will be available. So we're gonna start that in '25. It's gonna go through '31 and that's the life, the maximum life for 10-8. That's the reason it's stopping in that year, okay? So again, we're going to put the two together, which is at the bottom of page six and that produces a $2,260,000 note issue as a combined issue. So that's how we will market that. So two issues out to the market at the same time for each one, two purposes, okay? So the page seven is again a preliminary pricing schedule. What is very common with taxable is that the coupon and the yield column are the same. It is possible for some investors to pay you some premium, but this is a typical structure. If they do pay us premium, again, it would be used to apply to debt service on the issue. Right below that schedule is your item number six, which is that resolution providing for the sale of approximately $2,260 notes. Again, the same heads-up resolution, but this time just for the notes, okay? If we end up issuing slightly more than a $2,260, that's fine. Again, this is not a statutorily required resolution. It doesn't tie you to any dollar amount. It simply says you're gonna do a financing of notes at a future date and again, the same direction about preparing the city to enter into the bond market. Okay, so preparing for that bond market, we're going to, after reviewing the structuring options, we're preparing the official statement and we will also be doing another bond application to Moody's Investor Service. Okay, the last time we applied for a bond rating was in November of 2022, at which time Moody's reaffirmed the A1 rating. We will distribute documents into the marketplace for the sales, advertise them, place them on bidding platforms, give the underwriters their instructions on how to place their bids at a specific date and time. And we receive the bids, we verify them, restructure or the sizing of the issue if necessary and the winning underwriter is notified, subject to approval by the city, okay? The next page is just to give you information. When the city borrows general obligation debt, that is subject to statutory debt limitations and that debt limit is 5% of the city's equalized valuation. So that calculation is shown there and then, so that's a $47 million number, but you must subtract any existing debt from that number and add anything new. So that's the calculation to get to a net number of debt outstanding, which is 33,840 and you subtract it from your limit and that leaves you $13.4 million remaining. However, as of February 1st of '24, that limit goes up because you are allowed to reduce the $1,890,000 of principal payments that you will make in 2024 from your existing debt. So therefore, it grows your remaining debt limit. And that's the two ways, the two ways that you, that number grows is by your equalized value growing and the repayment of your debt. That's the two ways that you get back your debt capacity, okay? So interest rates shown in the report reflect market sales during the month of September, but again, varies from day to day. They're obviously not guaranteed and subject to change until final rates are locked in on the day of sale. Market conditions are very volatile as investors continue to contemplate the Fed's reaction to economic conditions at the November 1st Federal Open Market Committee meeting, okay? So we still have to get through that. The next step after tonight by the, for the council would be on October 9th. The council will consider two more resolutions and they are referred to as parameters resolutions. The parameters resolution will delegate authority to the city administrator or the city clerk, treasurer, finance director to accept the bids and award them to the respective winning bidder with the execution of what's called an approving certificate. So that's all prepared by the city's bond council, Corals and Brady. The other sections that will be in that resolution are typically found in a standard award resolution, which basically describes the terms of the bonds, how they're repaid, the levy of taxes, state and federal requirements. So that will be somewhat what is, you know, I hate to use the word generic, but that's what's found in every one of these type of resolutions. The issue size for both the bonds and the notes are subject to change based on the amount of capitalized interest and/or underwriters' premium or discount or that's gonna be in the winning bid. So the timeline after the parameters resolution is we anticipate the Moody's rating call to be on October 19th. We plan on being in the market on November 9th at this time and then all funds would be delivered to the city on December 1. Okay. All done.
Any questions for Carol?
Phil?
What kind of variation do you get on the bids? I mean, without knowing what the future will hold, like on a
Variation in terms of rate or how they're bid?
Both.
Both?
Yeah.
Why that? It can be, it can be a lot of variation depending on how many are in the market that day, okay? When we put it on the bidding calendar, we try and put it on at a time where we're not conflicting with a lot of other sales that are happening in the marketplace so that we get a lot of attention for the bids and we can get, yeah, it's gonna, when I say volatility in the market, if underwriters are not convinced that they can resell them right away to investors, they might be a little shy with placing their bids. So you can get maybe four or five bids. If you have a market that they're convinced that there is a lot of demand, you can get up to 12 bids. In that case, you can get a lot of variance between the lowest and the highest and you can, you're talking maybe up to half a percent difference in something like that. If they're only four or five, you're gonna see it much tighter bidding, okay? They, some of them will bid with the exact same interest rates. You look at them and they'll be the exact same interest rate, but the difference in their bid is how much premiums they're gonna give to the city because that affects that true interest rate. So if one of them says, well, I'm gonna give the city $100,000 and one says, I'm gonna give the city $110,000, well, $110,000 wins, okay? So that's how they, they use the premium to influence the result and, but you can look at the bids and the structure of the bidding is almost identical. I know that taxable is our, since very few taxable issues in the marketplace, so usually when there is a taxable, there's a lot of interest. So taxable note over 10 years would be a very, very attractive issue on its own. So we might have a lot of bids on that one as well.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Comments? Very well done, Carol.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With your With there being no questions, I will start at number two. And if you have any questions on each individual item, just go ahead and, we'll just pause for a second. If you have any questions. Uh, number two is approved and I initial resolution forty five, twenty three dash twenty three, authorizing three million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars general obligation bonds for community development projects in tax incremental districts. Any questions or I'll take a motion? Motion by Kenny.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Does it have to be a whole ball now?
Just a resolution.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number three, approved and I initial resolution forty five, twenty four dash twenty three, authorizing two million dollars general obligation bonds for regional projects. Questions or I'll take a motion?
Question, yes, sir.
Question, yes, sir. That, that is a different number, does that matter for the resolution purposes? Carol said that was a different number.
No, it doesn't matter.
Move to approve.
Motion by Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Schulte. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four is approved and I resolution forty five, twenty five dash twenty three, directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issue. Take a motion, ones and order.
Move to approve.
Motion by Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Gargano. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number five, approved and I, uh, approved and I resolution forty five, twenty six dash twenty three, providing for the sale of not to exceed five million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars general obligation corporate purpose bonds. Any questions, comments, or I'll take a motion, ones and order. Motion to approve. Motion by Kenny.
Second.
Seconded by I. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And number six, approved and I resolution forty five, twenty seven dash twenty three, providing for the sale of approximately two million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars taxable general obligation promissory notes.
Do you, do you want me to run through just the, the project list of that one? I'm not sure if everyone's totally clear on what that is.
Yeah, we agree.
Okay. So for that, that two point two, five hundred thousand is for the my home estates incentive. Additional five hundred thousand, that's TID eleven, in TID eleven for the purchase of the Gavin property. We'll give that money to the developer, they'll in turn buy the property back from us for five hundred thousand. So we're essentially replenishing the city's coffers with that half million. Two hundred and twenty five thousand, that's for the purchase of the commercial properties on highway age between Cotton Tail and twentieth, twenty first. Um, forty thousand dollars, that's the approximate estimate for the incentives for that TID eleven project, that commercial parcel. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's for the Retsloff extension incentive that we provided. And then Carol had a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for our capitalized interest. And then seven hundred and thirty five thousand is for the TID eight incentive for the fifty four units out here by the high school. So that's your total for that project.
Thank you.
Okay.
Everyone good on that? Any questions?
Move to approve.
Motion by Gargano. Seconded by Friends. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Again, thank you very much, Carol, for all your hard work.
Yes, Carol?
Thank you.
Jacob owes you lunch.
Yes.
All right, number seven is approved and I agree with the state of Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the repaving and updating of curb ramps on State Highway twenty three, East Main Street from Viking Drive to Dewey Avenue, city to replace water and sanitary sewer if needed. Steve, how are you doing?
Good, thank you, Mayor. Water and sewer is needed, so.
Is needed, we'll just make that known.
Oh, if you look at the agreement in the packet, so this is a typical state agreeing with the city for these projects. So they will, they're calling it like a repaving, so they would re, have to repay everything, curb and gutter, the, the payment, and then obviously the curb ramps, but some of that's going to happen next year with their other D O T project. The total cost is about, they estimated about three point five million. So the city cost is seventy eight, a little over seventy eight thousand. And then you can look at the bottom, there's the sanitary sewer and the water main, the state won't cover any of that cost. So the sanitary sewer is about close to eight hundred thousand, and then the water main is about nine hundred thousand. Now, this project probably won't happen until twenty thirty. They said they'll try to get it in at twenty twenty nine. But it's, it's, it looks like what their schedule is twenty thirty. They'll start designing the next couple of years on the sewer. So the city's responsible basically for that seventy eight. And then the, the sanitary sewer would be the wastewater utility, and the water main would be the water utility.
Questions for Steve?
These are preliminary numbers.
Steve, is it typical that they are looking that far out?
Well, I call them because everyone knows that stretch role between Viking and Dewey is a pretty rough shape. Um, and trying to get it on the schedule. Then they said that was as early as they could get it on twenty nine or thirty, so I wasn't going to say no.
Yeah, I do want to thank Steve for doing that, though. Um, early spring, we had a conversation about that, and you made the call, they responded. We were wishing it was a little bit sooner, but you're dealing with the state and your hands are pretty much tied with whatever they want to do. But at least it is on the schedule to be done. Our guy left us keeping doing the excellent pass shot.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be a big project because it's, you know, like businesses and everything will be affected. And the sewer main, top of it runs right down the middle of the street, so it'll be ripped up, the water main runs right down the south curb line. And John says his water main needs to be replaced. So it'll be a total, all the infrastructure underneath will be redone.
And what year do we say it was, we figure?
Twenty twenty nine or twenty twenty.
When it was done last.
Oh, the road?
Yeah.
What I could find was like in the late sixties, late seventies.
Wow.
When that stretch was done.
Long.
So again, it's, it has its useful life on the street.
Are these today numbers or these projected twenty twenty nine?
They are somewhat projected, I've been told. The D O T, they're, their numbers and I at M S A, because they're working with us on the airport stuff and the main street. So they, they come up with the numbers for the sewer and the water. And it's, you know, today's market, who knows?
Lots, lots can happen between now and twenty thirty.
Exactly.
At least some of the documents.
Usually what they do with these, then, once you get to a point, you know, closure of the project and they, they rebid it, when, when they bid the project, you know, they'll tweak these numbers and so everyone's aware of what's going on. That's what, they did that with K Street. They're on thirty three right now, so they, they, they adjust them.
Any other questions for Steve?
Yeah, it's just the initial, just to get moving.
Really get something on some paper, though.
Especially at those prices.
But Steve, the interchange, the extension of Viking Drive, that's still going forward.
Yeah, that, that'll be, so when I talk to him about this, this will include the intersection of Dewey, because that's, when they did the main street in, I think it was ninety three, they started on the, you know, west side of Dewey, you know, all through town. So that, that Dewey intersection is, is old. I mean, there's been some, when they did Walgreens, we, we did, we wiped, there's been some things, but the actual intersection, so they're going to go from the west side, so redo that intersection with this project and then go to the, the west side of Viking, because Viking will get done when we do that, with the airport project.
Any other questions? I'll take a motion, ones and order.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Motion by Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Schulte. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks so much for that, Steve. Uh, recommendations from boards, committees, and commissions. Uh, first item for the evenings from Parks Committee. Uh, and that's approved and I in a public hearing for resolution forty five, twenty dash twenty three, the C O R P, comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, adopting the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty eight plan as presented. We got Matt?
Or Matt.
Or Matt? So whichever, Matt?
I wanted to see if folks had any comments for the comment period with regards to the public hearing, but Sure. Uh, if, if there are none, hearing none, I would cruise through the plan. Just wanted to touch upon a couple of things. Uh, the most important thing with regards to preparing a comprehensive outdoor recreation plan is community. As in the eyes of the Wisconsin P N R, it keeps the funding window open for you from the approval of the plan for another five years to pursue, for example, the Mills Nelson Stewardship Fund or other land opportunities such as recreational boat, fishing gear, et cetera. So, um, besides kind of that checking the box of being in P N R's good graces to pursue the funding, uh, really it acts as a road back to the community of what you want to see in terms of parks and recreational assets in the next five years and even beyond that. Um, and in some ways, it, uh, it works closely with the natural cultural resources that's frequently referenced in comprehensive land, separate document. But there were just, uh, maybe two or three items I wanted to draw the council's attention to, uh, strengths of the city and kind of looking forward at opportunity. There were certain instances where in working with Parks Director Ben Scott, uh, the Parks Commission over the last six months of, uh, being very deliberate in terms of pointing to specific things, saying, yes, we know that's on our wish list, but in other times, opportunities saying, let's keep it a little bit broader in case, uh, the dollars funding donation wise or some new program comes along. And then because we were sufficiently broad in describing it, then we could go after that dollars event opportunity if the time arises, so. Couple of things I wanted to just quickly point out to the council. If we were to go to, uh, page twelve, I think this is, uh, I've talked with Matt with this, with, with Rebecca on this. In terms of, uh, selling the community that language in the blue, I, and then planning five, six years down, time to withstand, et cetera. I don't know of single community that can say, yeah, eighty percent of our community is residentially owned land is within a quarter mile of our twenty eight existing or proposed parks and recreation facilities. And if we were to expand that pool even further to say, okay, what if we talked about the Reesburg School District? What if we used those lands and those recreational facilities as well to reference that? Then that number jumps to, it's in the last, uh, well, about halfway down the blue box, about ninety six point two percent of the city, which just is not frequently seen often. So it's, it's awesome, and there's, uh, you know, their discussion, uh, the trail of the business park and usually that was part of the numbers of this calculation. But, uh, it really shows you the, the great breadth coverage that the facilities have within the city that folks can get to relatively easily. The next thing that I was going to draw folks' attention to was, um, page twenty nine, kind of another comparison. Uh, one of the primary changes from the former plan to this one is, um, the former plan referenced the National Recreation and Parks Association, uh, numbers, the N R P A. And, uh, they still exist as an entity. Uh, they've kind, I don't want to say changed their mission necessarily, but they have changed in ter, in terms of how they gather information from communities. Community can register with the N R P A and fill out basically almost like a census of their parks and recreation, uh, facilities. And that information is then calculated by the N R P A, and we can use it as a comparison tool of where Reed is, Reesburg stands as a community versus others. So, um, on this page, uh, something, uh, important in my mind, but also very impressive. Any metric that you'd want to have in a, a good way, you blow similarly sized communities on the water arm. Uh, just as one example, residents per park. Municipalities less than twenty thousand residents, it's that part of the triplets there. Uh, around twelve hundred and twenty five residents per park. Reesburg is three hundred and eighty four residents. So another exciting one, I'm seeing Tim smile. Uh, acres of parkland for a thousand residents. The national median, two point eight acres, municipality is less than twenty thousand. Uh, generally, that, that number's a little bit higher, about thirteen acres. Reesburg is thirty three point three acres. So, so something to be proud of and I'm staying looking forward of, yes, we have the twenty six, twenty seven current recreational facilities, indoor parks, field house coming along, northwest development area, the plan reference of, what are some things and visions, things that we'd like to see happen? Expanded amenities, uh, perhaps deferred maintenance that could be changed in the future. All these things kind of were kept in mind while going through this plan. Um, the last thing I wanted to briefly reference with everyone is across pages, uh, thirty two and thirty three was kind of our, a look for this came out of discussions with, uh, a kind of a blended approach of not only the discussions hosted by the Parks Commission here in the city, but also, uh, the recently completed, completed comprehensive plan and some of the information that was gleaned from the resident survey as part of that. So across, uh, this, the implementation matrix, uh, what are some very specific goals that we have in mind for the community over the next five years? It may change, they may reprioritize according to, or just with funding or, uh, opportunities or just emergencies that come up in terms of, um, running certain facilities or something that comes along, uh, pickleball last year, in the last five, ten years. It's been a good example of, uh, communities kind of scrambling to do that. I know you have an excellent lip facility there, that's a background photo of one of the pages of the plans of, uh, high schools, kids playing on it, but, uh, so we have across the goals, the objectives, kind of the, the left, and then specific action items that speak to it. So, uh, there's one, and I know it's, uh, been referenced with, uh, some of the Parks meetings that we've attended, and if we were to go to goal five, for example, at the bottom, uh, provide a proper budget to keep parks and recreational facilities clean, safe, comfortable, and beautiful. As an objective, we'd say safety in the park. And I know just across a handful of Parks meetings over the last six months, unfortunately, we, um, had reference to, oh, someone's been trying to break into, uh, you know, uh, a facility or a storage area, an E J on park, for example. Um, the action item for that would be, uh, cameras in the parks of the new recreations, existing or new recreational facilities. And then on the subsequent page, on that page thirty two, or thirty three, excuse me, uh, we kind of outlined, trying to bracket as best we can, again, funding, other things may shift around. But, uh, the wish lists, the desirables, trying to figure out what are some big ticket items? Of course, behind cards with some smaller, comparatively smaller items that we could kind of nestle in and have a pathway over the next five years to see, uh, uh, where things may fall in terms of, uh, budgeting and so forth, so. Those are just a couple of the things, the highlights that I wanted to, uh, to touch upon. Know that there are any, uh, questions, uh, that walkability map that I referenced is, uh, page twenty. It's pretty much right in the middle of the documents, uh, the fold out. We portrayed, uh, portrayed, uh, the city, uh, we portrayed the school districts, lands, we portrayed the parks and recreation facilities owned, operated by the city down there. In addition, and kind of the, the sphere of influence, the quarter mile walkability around those sites, so.
Very cool, any questions for Matt?
Great.
I know it was a lot of time and effort to get that together. Phil, anything you want to add from the Parks and Recreation side?
Yeah, it was, um, it was an enjoyable venture. It was a lot of stuff to do, but Matt and Melissa from Bearbackers are, were fantastic work with. And Matt, our park department head, was great. Um, yeah, this is an exciting time for parks, and I think we have a great plan to get us through till twenty twenty eight.
Amazing parks, and to make them even more amazing, it'd be mind blown for sure for a lot of people. So, yeah, we, we really have to be happy and blessed with what we have for opportunities for recreation. I, I'm going to do a little public hearing to make sure if anybody here wants to speak, so we fulfill our obligations. Is there anyone who wants to speak for or against the resolution forty five, twenty dash twenty three? Is there anyone who wants to speak for or against the Resolution forty-five twenty dash twenty-three? All right, here you know one, I'll close the public hearing and take back the council discussion, I'll take the motion to approve.
Move to approve forty-five twenty dash two-three, the Comprehensive Outdoor Rec Plan, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight.
Motion by Ferguson.
I'll second.
Seconded by Friends. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number two is from the Plan Commissions, first reading and set of public hearing for October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. For ordinance nineteen sixty-four dash twenty-three, amend in chapter six ninety zoning as it relates to zero lot line, townhouses, bungalows, and signage. Brian, how you doing tonight?
Good, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so this ordinance has uh, made it two sections to it, the first half is mainly some uh, housekeeping items. Um, last few years, we've added things like zero lot line, townhouses, and bungalow courts and so on. We also have a separate section that talks about uh, minimum lot width for our lot frontage. Also now there's a disconnect between two things, so this is kind of including the uh, so the zero lot line would have a twenty-two foot frontage that's based on a minimum ten foot driveway and a six foot side, uh, setback on each side. Uh, townhouses, as you see, has a twenty-four foot width minimum as it is, so that would just make it that as well, uh, three frontage also twenty-four feet. Uh, bungalow courts, we haven't had any yet, but I've had at least two discussions um, in the past year or so on those. Uh, seven twenty was a little high for a minimum four area. So after a bit of discussion of Plan Commission, we settled on twenty-four by twenty-four, which would be five seventy-six. Uh, I didn't make that change at the type one toll one here, but that is, should be five seventy-six for that. Um, then signage, there's a state law that says uh, it used to be someone's grandfathered in, you can only make changes, improvements up to fifty percent of its value. And the state took that out a few years ago or said you couldn't do that anymore. Um, so the signage still had the old language, but it would just be making that uniform with the rest of the ordinance for that. And the section, uh, the second part of the ordinance is uh, accessory dwelling units, which is linked right now with the county. And there's a committee right now with the Health Department to push those. Uh, so this, this would be a completely new section. Um, again, size-wise, because look at other ordinances, there's a big range between three hundred and twelve hundred that I found. Uh, so the Plan Commission decided on five seventy-six again, up to twelve hundred, that'd be total. Um, section ten uh, says you can't use them as a tourist roomhouse, so Airbnb, for example. Uh, but there's a state law that says you can't deny it if it's between seven and twenty-nine days. You talk to the city attorney by having some language to clarify that. Uh, we can have that for the public hearing for next, for next um, meeting. That uh, I'd ask any questions otherwise?
Question for Brian. Thank you, Brian. Council, discussion, I'll take the motion, accept public hearing.
Move to set the public hearing.
Motion by Vergonal.
Second.
Seconded by Kudusen. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we'll have that public hearing on October twenty-third. Uh, number three is also from the Plan Commission, it's approved and I of Plan Development Group site and plan for fifty-six unit apartment building in the thirteen hundred block of A Street, applicant Third Act Development LLC. Brian?
Uh, so this is a kind of a two-part review. Uh, the second part will be the plan, which will be next month after Plan Commission reviews it again. Uh, so this is, so the part before you tonight is the apartment buildings and the townhouses. Um, so you see they've got fifty-six unit um, apartment building proposed. Um, this meets, bottom line, this meets the zoning ordinance, it meets the comprehensive land, consulting. Um, except for the height of the building, of the, of the um, the apartment building, which would be five feet higher, that's why it's before you tonight. Um, but it meets all the parking setbacks, density, effect density, it's a twenty acre parcel with a hundred and four units, I believe it is, total. Uh, which is about eight three hundred square feet plus per unit. So point A, this is well, well over the minimum for density. Um, much more spread out than compared, compared to, say, Elton Apartments, which is fifteen hundred square feet uh, per unit. Um, so with that, the Plan Commission does recommend approval with the five feet extra for the height of the apartment building.
Any questions for Brian? All right, thanks, Brian. Discussion, comments, or I'll take the motion, ones in order.
Move to approve.
Motion by Vergonal.
Second.
Seconded by Kudusen. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four is also from the, the Plan Commission, it's approved and I of Resolution forty-five twenty-two dash twenty-three. Certified survey map dividing parcel two seven six dash two seven five eight dash zero 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 zero. It is zero lot line generally located twenty-four sixty-two and twenty-four sixty-four Russell Court, application LP LLC. Brian?
So this is a corner line heat creek that currently has a uh, duplex under construction right now. Um, the owner would like to divide it in half, so with the zero lot line, uh, Plan Commission recommends approval. And it also includes a draft, as you can see there, of the uh, agreement, which will go with, with the property. Uh, that would propose between the two property owners, each side of that duplex.
Questions for Brian? Thanks, Brian. Council, comments, discussion, I'll take the motion, ones in order.
Move to approve.
Motion by Schulte.
Second.
Seconded by Hyde. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is from Public Works, it's approved and I bid for infrastructure at My Home Estates. Steve?
Welcome back, buddy.
Well, we had six bidders for this project, so this is the property next to Pine View, in Pine View and Anishon Park. Now, the low bid was from A One Excavating, two million one hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred thirteen dollars. And then the high bid was two million three hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars. So they were really close, uh, real competitive. And it was about three hundred thousand under bid, the low bid, were under the budget, so uh, we'd recommend A One Excavating, and this includes, you know, sewer, water, storm sewer, retention ponds, grading, curb and gutter, gravel, asphalt, and even that trail that's gonna go up and around in the park to the north, so. It, it's, it includes every, all of the infrastructure, correct? Public Works recommended A One Excavating.
Questions for Steve? Dave, anything from Commission?
No, I think Steve wrapped it up, he summed it up pretty good.
All right. Discussion, I'll take the motion, ones in order.
Move to approve.
Motion by, was it Schulte? Hyde? Motion by Hyde.
Seconded.
Seconded by Kenny. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And number six from Public Works is approved and I bid for the site clearing and grubbing for the new wa- wastewater treatment plant. Steve?
Okay, we did this out because the, the DNR has put a restriction on us for clearing that woods, it has to be done in the winter and after November fifteenth, so. If we wanna get started next year in the plan, we need to get that woods down, so. We did a bid just for the clearing and grubbing, they'd also, they'd take the stumps out. Um, and put a covered top seed over the top of the, of the ground that's out there. So we had five bids, you can see it is quite a range. Uh, Mizey Construction was the low bid at fifty thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars. And Old Slime and Gravel was three hundred seventy-four thousand two hundred dollars, which is quite the range. We did call Mizey and just double-checked, and we said, yep, that's mine. I'm good with it, that's, that's my number, so. We recommend to go with Mizey Construction, and else, it would start sometime after November fifteenth. And we'll just, I think we'll just pay for this out of the wastewater fund instead of going through the loan. Thought it'd just be easier to do it that way than go through the, since it's, since the cost is so low.
Yeah. Questions for Steve? Thanks, Steve. Council, discussion, comments, or take the motion?
I think we should approve it before he changes his price, so I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Schulte, seconded by Kudusen. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, City Ministry reports, number one, fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget workshop dates.
Well, here we are. It's budget time. Um, hoping that uh, we could have this at either five or six P M on October twenty-sixth. As a backup meeting on November ninth, if everyone is available. Check your calendars, please. We purposely did it a week after the uh, the league's meetings, and now no one's going to the league meeting this year, so.
I'll clear my calendar if it's good news.
It's always good news.
Well, always a plan.
Hopefully we don't need the November meeting, but definitely the October twenty-sixth meeting. But I just need to know what, if it's five o'clock or six o'clock, whatever is better for you guys.
I'm five, five's our, you're fine at five?
Yeah.
I'm five.
All right, thanks. Maybe council should be at five.
It used to be seven.
It used to be seven thirty.
Okay, that's all I had for it.
Thank you. Uh, Commission Committee Board of Staff reports, Parks and Recreation.
We did not meet because we did not have a quorum.
Okay, that is an issue.
Stuff happens.
That's right. Public Works?
We were able to meet, barely, but we were able to meet um, and discuss the two last action items on the agenda and, and updates on projects. Um, for instance, uh, you know, having the, the DOT put us on the schedule. Um, we'll have to have detour routes, which might facilitate some different things in order to accommodate, so. As one project comes forward, it sometimes manifests others, so.
That was in the back of my head, too, that it would be a little, we've got some time to figure that out, but it'll be.
So we had a good discussion.
All right, let's see, Utility Commission?
Utility met for the regular meeting on September eighteenth. Accepting applications for fiber line workers and communications techs. Uh, the electric crew has repaired all hotspots that were discovered during the infrared inspection and continue to replace age poles throughout the distribution system. Uh, water crew has been proactively repairing service lines in the Amanda Drive area. And that department has also been painting and flushing hydrants. Uh, fiber network construction is completed in Loganville, splicing to start soon. Uh, the fiber crews will be working on projects in Baraboo, Lake Devon, Hillpoint, Lone Rock, and Lime Ridge. Keeping those guys running all over the country.
Go, 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 all right. All right, thank you much for that update. Plan Commission, um, we pretty much talked about everything that was on the agenda with Plan Commission, also had a look at the uh, plan for uh, the um, Third Act Development, which is My Homes Estates. Um, yeah, we got a good look at that, but that will become final here, I think, at the next Plan Commission meeting, so. Lot of things going on, which is awesome. Uh, let's see, Zoning Board or any other committee, commission, or staff member in the evening want to report? We'll go around the horseshoe. Dave Newton?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Don't be.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Miss you friends.
Nothing, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Nothing today.
Thanks.
Nothing to me.
Jake from City Hall.
Nothing tonight.
We'll be good feeling, though, you gotta analogy for something going on.
I have strep.
You tell me that, and it means nothing.
I know Saturday, it should be fine.
We'll talk about that later. Tim Becker.
Nothing, sir.
Mike Argano.
Nothing here.
Jason Schulte.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Sonny Hyde.
Nothing.
I think I, Jake should have brought up one thing, what is the application deadline for our open first alderman?
It is Friday at four P M, and there's not been any applications received so far.
So you hope anyone in the first district?
Don't, don't make us come find you.
That's my alder, too, so I'd like to have somebody, right?
Somebody else.
It's gonna leave a mark, you know? Yeah, I was gonna say, well, we'll just, just miss that because you're sick, yeah.
And again, really, Jake, you wait till the end of the meeting, tell me you have strep.
Actually, go.
Oh, all right, let's uh, prepare to go to closed session. Per Section nineteen point eight five sub one sub E of the Wisconsin statutes, the common council was considering entering closed session for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating and purchasing public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Specifically as it relates to the financial support of the Reesburg Area Ambulance Service slash Commission. Take a motion to go to closed session.
So move.
Motion by Argano.
Second.
Seconded by Kenny. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we'll take a couple minutes to go to closed session. Thanks, everybody.